Everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, August 21st, 2025 regular meeting of the Boulder City Council. I'm going to get us started with an announcement. The city is hosting our annual citywide engagement event, What's Up Boulder? On Sunday, September 7th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Scott Carpenter Park. This is your opportunity to talk with staff from all across the city and learn about projects happening now and in the future. It is also equally fun. We will have free popsicles, music, lawn games, and arts and crafts. It's free fun for the whole family. Interpretation services will be available as well, so we hope to see you there. And with that, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Any Alicia, if we can have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, everyone, and thanks for joining us. We'll start the roll call with Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Mayor Protem Folkerts.
Present.
Councilmember Marquess.
Present.
Shuhard.
Here.
Wallach.
Here.
And Weiner.
Present.
Councilmember Spear is absent, and Mayor, we have our quorum.
Thanks so much. So we need a motion to amend the agenda, and Teresa, I'm going to turn to you with a question. We also need to post, we're adding something, but we also need to postpone the BPOA item. Do you want that in the motion to amend the agenda or under the consent agenda?
Mayor, either place is appropriate.
All right. In that case, I would request consideration of a motion to, I would request a motion to amend the agenda to do two things. Add item 11A, which is consideration of a motion to call an executive session of the city council, as authorized by 246424CRS, related to Sundance Film Festival confidential legal advice and determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, and also to remove item 3G from the consent agenda and postpone that to the date of September 4th.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and second? All in favor, please raise your hands. Great, thank you. The agenda has been amended, so we now are going to go to open comment. So Alicia, if you could read our guidelines, please.
All right, thank you. I'll now go over the participation at city council meeting guidelines. Again, thank you for your participation at tonight's council meeting. We ask that you abide by the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code, including participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. Individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Only audio testimony is permitted during open comment. No attendee shall disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any council meeting in a manner that obstructs the business of the meeting. This also includes failing to obey any lawful order of the presiding officer to leave the meeting room or refrain from addressing the council. Our remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. And lastly, assinities, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting will not be tolerated. Thank you again for listening, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Alicia. All right, we've got 20 people signed up to speak, although I understand one person withdrew. We're going to rotate between in-person and virtual speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and I am going to be strict about that time limit in fairness to all of the speakers. So our first three speakers are Candace Jordan, in-person, Britta Signer, virtual, and Leslie Glastrom, in-person. Candace, you can get us started.
I told you all in the email, I had two questions for you tonight. But I want to begin by saying, this is little Bailey. I'm sure I don't have to inform any of you that I don't own him. In Boulder, Bailey is recognized as a sentient being with legal rights. So I'm representing myself and Bailey. I forgot my glasses, excuse me. I have requested a meeting with Redfern, I have requested a meeting with Ms. Tate, and I've not been given those meetings. I have bent over backwards and put myself in jeopardy many times to communicate with you all about the issue with the Boulder Police Department, the Boulder County Drug Task Force, and the 20th Judicial District. It has not been my pleasure to inform you of these matters, and I've paid a very high price for doing so. I can hardly wait to see how our room is contaminated when I get back today. I'm hoping that Nicole Spear, who's not here, and Ms. Folkerts will make a comment to council before you leave, before your term expires in the fall. It's your right to deny me these meetings, it's your right not to read my emails, but sadly, that leaves me with only my own right, which is to litigate. And I know that you all know, I have tried very, very hard not to do that. I think you'll be amazed at the witnesses that I have of the evidence, and I wish you were all more curious about that, so that I could have informed you more. Again, I forgot my glasses.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have Britta Signer, virtual, Leslie Glastrom, in-person, and Daryl Monley, in-person.
My name is Britta Singer, and I live in South Boulder. I am asking you to schedule a session to study proportional representation, which is a better way to elect members of the city council. In 2023, the city of Boulder used instant runoff ranked choice voting to elect our mayor. In that election, Bob Yates was ahead in the first round with 47% of the votes. The second round of counting showed that Aaron Brockett had more first and second choice votes than any other candidate, and Brockett won. Either one would have made a great mayor, but the people of Boulder had a slight preference for Brockett. What about the people who would have preferred Yates? When only one person can win in a competitive race, it means that some people were disappointed. In this case, a lot of people were disappointed. Fortunately, the multi-winner method we use to elect the council opens the doors to proportional representation, which makes it likely that more voters will be happy with the results. 598 people signed a petition asking for a session to study proportional representation. An advocate for proportional representation has spoken at every single open comment session since February 6th, until two weeks ago, when open comment was cut short. I am back again today to ask for one more time, please schedule a study session for proportional representation. Thank you.
Thanks. Now we go to Leslie Glastrom, in-person, then Daryl Monley, in-person, and Richard Cate, virtual. Is Leslie here? All right, not seeing Leslie Glastrom. If she gets here before the end, we'll get her back on. So that means Daryl Monley is up. Any Daryl Monley in the room? Ah, there you go.
So I'm here to question the community assembly, which has been formed by the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan to develop a community version or vision of the 15-minute neighborhood in Boulder. First, I'd like to read this short excerpt from an invitation I received to participate in this community assembly. If chosen, let's see, the community assembly will explore and create recommendations around how and where to implement 15-minute neighborhoods in Boulder. 15-minute neighborhoods are places where community members can meet many daily needs and access essential services with just a short walk, roll, or bike ride. This has been a longstanding part of our community vision, as captured in previous comprehensive plans, but we've struggled to define it, develop clear action steps, and make progress towards it. To be eligible as one of the 48 people randomly chosen, this is part of this invitation, to represent the citizens of Boulder, you had to be at least 16 years old, you had to have lived in the city of Boulder or unincorporated Boulder County for at least six months. You had to attend all seven sessions of the assembly, but you didn't have to be a citizen of the United States. Why, I'd like to encourage everyone here to wonder, why is the community assembly envisioning 15-minute neighborhoods very quietly behind closed doors? Why were invitations to participate in the community assembly mainly sent to mobile home parks and low-income housing communities? Why did the 48 people representing the Boulder city residents have to be U.S. citizens? Nothing was mentioned about whether they must be legally residing in our country. If they weren't citizens, they don't have the right to vote, and yet they are representing all the voting citizens of Boulder. And why has there been no opportunity for the Boulder citizens to give meaningful input to this process, when 15-minute cities is a very controversial idea, which the citizens of Boulder should have a right to weigh in on?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Richard Cate, virtually, then Patty Fuster Aguilera, virtual, and then Eve Partridge, in-person.
Mayor, I do not see Richard online tonight.
Okay, then, can we have quiet in the room, please? Quiet in the room, please. So then we'll go to Patty Fuster Aguilera, who I understand will have a translator, and we do give additional time for the translation process, so we'll go to Patty.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Boulder invierte 35 millones de dólares en empresas que se benefician del genocidio. ¿Cómo se alinea esto con los valores de nuestra ciudad? Eso convierte a esta ciudad en cómplice del genocidio, no solo en Gaza, sino también en el Congo y Sudan. Exigimos desinversión. 10,5 millones de dólares de Caterpillar, cuyas excavadoras demuelen casas y matan palestinos. 6,5 millones de dólares de Microsoft, que alimenta la guerra israelí con inteligencia artificial, y también explota a la gente en las minas de cobalto del Congo. 4,7 millones de dólares de Cisco, que alimenta el sistema de datos de ejército israelí. 13,7 millones de dólares de Toyota, cuyos camiones patrullan la Palestina ocupada. Boulder excluye, and I quote, "armas de fuego o armas utilizadas para la defensa nacional." Yo sostengo que la defensa nacional no existe. La especulación en la guerra es especulación bélica, y no hay nada ético en ello. Como claro ejemplo del mal uso de este término, está el argumento de que Israel tiene el derecho de defenderse, matando a más de 18,000 niños en Gaza, sin contar a los mutilados y huérfanos que se quedan sin futuro y privados de su infancia. ¿Cómo se puede decir que eso es defensa? ¿Y qué decir de todas las guerras que nuestro país ha iniciado e intensificado en nombre de la defensa nacional y la muerte de tantas vidas inocentes? Iraq, un millón de personas inocentes que matamos. Afganistán, 300,000. Vietnam, 3 millones. Grenada, 500. Estamos indignados, estamos de luto. Nuestros hermanes indígenas están reviviendo el trauma del genocidio que sufrieron aquí, y no me callaré, el silencio es complicidad. No se puede tener paz sin justicia, y no la habrá. Desinviertan ahora. Desde el río hasta el mar, Palestina será libre. Ustedes van y toman vacaciones de verano, pero Gaza nunca puede descansar. Cese al fuego.
Okay, your time is up, but you can switch to the English translation.
This is the interpreter, can you hear me?
Yes.
Here's the interpretation. Boulder invests $35 million in companies who benefit from genocide. How does this align with our city values? This makes this city complicit in genocide, not only in Gaza, but in the Congo and Sudan. We demand disinvestment. 10.5 million from Caterpillar, whose bulldozers demolish homes and kill Palestinians. 6.5 millions from, million dollars from Microsoft, fueling Israel's war with artificial intelligence, and it also exploits people in the cobalt mines in Congo. 4.7 million from Cisco, powering the Israeli military's data system. 13.7 million dollars from Toyota, whose trucks patrol occupied Palestine. Boulder excludes, and I quote, "firearms or weapons used for national defense." I argue that there is no such thing as national defense. War profiteering is war profiteering, and there is nothing ethical about this. A clear example of the misuse of this term is that, quote, "Israel has the right to defend itself," unquote, "by killing more than 18,000 children in Gaza, not counting those who have been mutilated, and orphans who are left without a future and stripped of their childhood." How is this defense? How about all of the wars that our country has started or escalated in the name of national defense and the killing of so many innocent lives? Iraq, 1 million innocent people we have killed. Afghanistan, 300,000. Vietnam, 3 million. Grenada, 500. We are angry, we are grieving. Our indigenous brothers and sisters are reliving the trauma of genocide they endured here, and I will not be silent. Silence is complicity. There is no peace without justice, and there never will be. Divest now. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. You took a summer break, but Gaza cannot take any breaks. Ceasefire now.
Thanks. Quiet, please. All right, just a note that signs cannot be held higher than your face, so I'm just seeing some signs go higher, please keep those lower. Our next three people are Eve Partridge, in-person, Annabelle Brown, in-person, and Rob Smoke, in-person.
I have three topics. One, the city has in its investment plans to not profit off of war. It is simple to follow the structures that are already in place, which I couldn't be more thrilled already exist. By divesting in Microsoft and Caterpillar, we will be in accordance with the policies of the city of Boulder, and therefore representative of the community as a whole. Number two, Boulder has a policy of inclusivity and diversity in place already, and we need to be attentive to Arab and Muslim community members. Hate crimes absolutely have gone up, not just offensive words, but stabbing, shootings, and threats of safety. We need the anti-Islamophobia and anti-Arab hate proclamation to be finished as soon as possible, to make a statement that our community truly does not tolerate bigotry. Number three is about our federal rights. Banning six community members and closing open comment for two months sets a dangerous precedent. We need our First Amendment of free speech protected, as well as the Fourth Amendment, which is our right for due process. Both are eroding through manipulative actions by our federal totalitarian government. And we need to protect our rights against censorship and forced detention. We need our community protected from harmful entities and federal agents like ICE that do not have our best interests at heart. We need your support and representation, not division and smear campaigns against council members and longtime Boulder Peace and Justice residents. You are here to represent us and represent Boulder plans already in place against profiteering from warmongering. This isn't that hard. Thank you.
Thanks. Now we'll go to Annabelle Brown, Rob Smoke, in-person, and Eric Gross, virtual. So Annabelle.
Hello, my name is Annabelle Brown, and I am a CU Boulder student, and I've lived in Boulder for three years. Over those three years, Boulder has become my home, and it is important to me to know that it is a place that acts with conscience. Right now, the city has over $18 million invested in Microsoft and Caterpillar. Microsoft provides the Israeli state with technologies that enable its illegal occupation and surveillance of Palestine. Caterpillar bulldozers are used by Zionist settlers to demolish Palestinian homes. U.N. bodies have labeled both companies as complicit in apartheid. Their products, and therefore we as investors, enable a system of violence that has killed an estimated 400,000 Palestinians in Gaza, almost four times the population of Boulder. I can say with certainty that each of those lives was a universe. Here in Boulder, we can't even provide safe housing for our own unhoused neighbors, yet our city's money flows to corporations making Palestinians homeless halfway around the world. Boulder already recognizes that investments are legitimate moral decisions. That's why we divested from fossil fuels, and why municipal code precludes investment in industries like private prisons, weapons, and tobacco. We already accept that where we put our money reflects who we are. I know some of you believe that the issue of Palestine is outside of your purview, but it is within your purview to decide how Boulder spends its money, and if that money is tied to war crimes and what human rights scholars call genocide, then the responsibility sits right here in this room. Do not attempt to hide behind bureaucracy while our city profits from death. Divesting now is the difference between complicity and integrity. Now is the time to prove that we can stand for justice. Take our money out of Microsoft and Caterpillar and show the world that Boulder will not make world genocide.
Your time is up. Thank you. All right, now we have Rob Smoke, in-person, Eric Gross, virtual, and Tim Plasse, in-person.
Yeah, hi, my name's Rob Smoke, I live in Boulder. I want to read a quote that I saw this morning, really pretty early, right when I got up. This is from Daily Camera article. Quote, "If we were twiddling our thumbs, and our budget was great, we solved every problem, and we're actually just looking for stuff to do, then yes, okay, let's have a conversation." Councilmember Matt Benjamin said. That is absolutely not the state we're in right now. And, you know, around the same time in the morning, I was listening to Democracy Now!, which you can find online, I mean, I recommend, I recommend it wholeheartedly because there's a lot of truth and honesty that comes through on that show, but this morning, they had an interview with a woman, a woman doctor, a physician, not being allowed into Gaza, an American doctor, and they also played audio of her associate, who's currently in Gaza and unable to treat children coming in with massive trauma, you know, nonstop casualties, nonstop views of people starving, and this poor woman, who's a six-year medical student, was just really at the point of absolute exhaustion. And it just seems incredible to me that I read a quote like this, about twiddling our thumbs, you know, and if, you know, we could have a conversation, maybe? I mean, these are people who are dying, who are being slaughtered in Gaza, and it's not me, it's not just me saying this, there's over 100 human rights and humanitarian organizations saying the same thing. Something has to be done, something has to change immediately. Thanks.
Thanks. Now we go to Eric Gross, virtual, Tim Plasse, in-person, and Esraya Charon, in-person.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we received this message today from friend Gaza. Said to the local government in Boulder, "I am not writing these words from behind a desk or a safe place. I write from the heart of hell, from beneath the rubble, beneath the sound of planes, amidst the blood of children and the cries of mothers. My name is Mohammed, a young man from Gaza. I no longer count the days because every day feels like the end. We are not living, we are just trying not to die. I write to you because you have a voice that can be heard and a stance that can be recorded. You vote there while we burn here. Your silence hurts, and your refusal to divest from companies that kill us is a betrayal of our humanity. Do not ask for miracles, just stop supporting those who sell their weapons to kill us. At least say the word ceasefire. Give us some hope, dignity, and justice. I write this message not knowing if I will be alive tomorrow, but I hope it reaches you and awakens the humanity in your decisions." That's from Mohammed from Gaza, child who grew up too soon, witnessing what should never be seen. And as to the divestment, which we'll hopefully be discussing shortly, I want to remind you, Caterpillar has been mentioned, of the photo that I brought in several months ago, and I handed to each of you to look at, of a human body that had been crushed by a bulldozer into what looked like tomato soup, that I will never forget, that I can never get out of my head. And then I want to inform anyone, because only one member of the council was at the march in Boulder this weekend, marching for our lives, with the run for our lives. One of your members was there, but one of the other members of that march, I said, more than 1,000 children under the age of one have been killed in Gaza, and someone in the march shouted, "Not enough!" She shouted, "Not enough!", and I begged anyone there to disagree, say that's wrong. No one will.
Your time is up. All right, we're going to go now to Tim Plasse, then Esraya Charon, in-person, Martha McPherson, in-person.
Thank you, Mayor. No.
It is here.
Good? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Tim Plasse, and I am the president of Historic Boulder, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Historic Boulder, and I'm here to address the Silver Saddle Annexation Agreement, which is the amendment, which is consent agenda item 3D. And I want to say at the outset that Historic Boulder is not against the project moving forward. However, we have real concerns about the treatment of the historic resources on the site, both the motel and the vintage neon sign. The Silver Saddle Motel is a vestige of the automobile tourist trade that flourished at the west end of Arapahoe from the 1920s through the 1960s. It's one of the few remaining reminders of the bygone, inexpensive tourist lodging that once existed in many places in Colorado. Sadly, the motel and the neon sign have both degraded significantly under the current ownership over the course of almost eight years. Much of the exterior material has been removed from the landmark structures, and almost all the neon tubes on the sign have been broken. The sign is sitting haphazardly on the ground in front of the motel. A landmark property deserves better. In addition to our concern about the treatment of the motel and the sign, we are also very concerned about the recommendation from planning board to delandmark the property. We were relieved that the recommendation did not make it into the annexation agreement amendment. The agreement with the developers to landmark a portion of the property came at a time of annexation. Annexation is a huge benefit to the developers. Without it, their project couldn't move forward. In return, the city has the opportunity to receive community benefit. In this case, several acres of open space, a portion of units dedicated to affordable housing, and the landmarking of the historically significant property. The retention of historic resources on the site continues to be an important community value. To undo that would be a loss to this site, as well as a terrible precedent to the future annexations that have history worthy of preservation. We at Historic Boulder look forward to seeing the motel faithfully restored and the iconic neon sign repaired and relit.
Your time is up.
At the west end of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to Esraya Charon, in-person, Martha McPherson, in-person, and Joaquin Ross Tellechea, in-person.
I came to encourage you to divest from Microsoft and Caterpillar to align with Boulder's values, because to me, the decision is an obvious no-brainer. However, as I thought about what I might like to say tonight, I realized that there's something weighing on my heart. I was appalled and shocked, and frankly embarrassed for you, to see seven council people publicly gang up on their colleague, the only person of color among you. I thought Boulder had values, a welcoming and inclusive community, one that fosters racial equity, inclusion, and diversity, one that wishes to advance racial equity and confronts oppression, and that ensures the city is an inclusive workplace. How is it, then, that seven privileged white council people made public statements condemning the one council person of color? Why didn't you sit down with her to seek understanding? Don't you know that a person of color has a perspective that privileged white people can learn from? How do you think that makes people of color in our community feel, when the one member of council whose lived experience informs her knowledge of oppression and injustice is slapped down for speaking out about crimes against humanity by seven privileged white people? Are you kidding me, that you know more than she does about oppression and injustice? You've shown yourselves to be closed to learning from others. The seven of you need to take an anti-racism workshop so that you can do better.
Time is up. Thanks. Now we have Martha McPherson, in-person, Joaquin Ross Tellechea, in-person, and Patrick O'Rourke, virtual.
I would like to reiterate- I would like to reiterate what Esraya just said. I feel like the reality of who we see representing us is a reflection that does not sit well with, I think, the majority of people, I would hope, the majority of people in Boulder. And perhaps we'll have a Mom Donnie event here that deposes this cabal of unconscious people. That's all I can say at this point, how you can defend a genocide and attack Taisha, who says this is not a case of anti-Semitism, it is a case of destruction, you know, and that you fail to be able to look at yourselves and that you've held on. We have been here since October 7th, every two times a month, begging for a ceasefire resolution. Instead, what did we get? We got an anti-Semitism ordinance. How dare you? How dare you? It's unfathomable that you can continue to defend Israel. How do you sleep? It's a sign of you have lost your humanity, or you're in such denialism that you can't face yourself. And I have a hard time facing myself as an American. I'm so ashamed of what we're doing to the world, and you have a little bit of power, and you refuse to face it. Instead, you attack Taisha for the fine line of saying, "This firebombing was not a case of anti-Semitism, it was a case of this..."
Your time is up. Thanks. All right, now we have Joaquin Ross Telachea in person, Patrick O'Rourke Virtual, and Danya Alnusal in person.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Joaquin Ross Telachea. I'm the Community Outreach and Public Policy Coordinator at EFA, and I'm here to talk about our community priority survey today. This is a survey we do every year to gauge the priorities and concerns of almost 8,000 members of our community, who are families, seniors, and individuals who come to EFA for services such as housing and food assistance. And many of these people are low-income residents of Boulder. From this survey, from the results we collected, the three greatest concerns amongst this part of our community are, one, affordable housing, which was the same as last year; two, a loss of benefits such as Medicaid and SNAP, especially with the retraction of the federal safety net by the new administration in Washington; and third, a lack of job opportunities in Boulder. And amongst Spanish speakers, which was half of our respondents, one of the top three concerns was feeling secure in their community. The survey also helps us measure the economic situation of these households in the past year. Regarding income, 13% of households saw an increase, while 42% stayed the same, and 45% actually saw their income decrease. In terms of expenses, 56% of households saw their expenses increase over the past year. Noting these two trends, it is no surprise that 62% of households say they cannot cover their typical monthly expenses here in Boulder. We think it is important that City Council is aware of this concerning situation in our community. Low-income households in Boulder are seeing their economic situation erode. We will send you our full report with policy recommendations to the next council to take under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to Patrick O'Rourke Virtual, then Danya Alnusal in person, and Evan Rabitz in person.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Historic Boulder. I'm calling in regarding 90 Arapahoe, and I'm requesting that it be called up tonight. It's on your consent agenda. There's a variety of issues that concern me even after the Planning Commission sent through a notice, and I'm just going to go through a couple of them. We've all been watching this project for the last eight years at the mouth of the canyon. I actually live just two miles west of it, and I've watched them struggle getting out of the ground and getting this project going. We cannot be held responsible for the developer not making a profit on a building. That being said, he went before the Planning Commission requesting that the Annexation Agreement be amended. The concern I have is he didn't go before the Landmarks Board or before the Planning Board requesting that the delandmarking of that particular site, which is historic in nature, and it's part of the Annexation Agreement, be modified. This came solely at the request of the Planning Department. Laura Kaplan bought it up, and the other members batted around as if they were proficient in what a landmark property is. And the reality here is that we cannot let a developer come into our town, fail on a project, come back to the city and say, "Hey, I'm sorry, I messed up, and in order to move forward, I need to adjust this plan." That being said, I just request a couple things. Number one, if you call it up, set aside and send it back. I know Marcy's going to be there tonight to talk about this particular project. Don't let them delandmark this project. This developer is a quality developer. He has the ability to restore those buildings. He, by neglect, for only his own purpose, let those buildings fall into disarray. Thank you.
Thanks. Now we'll go to Danya Alnusal in person, Evan Rabitz in person, and Chris Allred in person.
I'd like you all to close your eyes and think of your favorite moment from today. Please humor me for a moment, do close your eyes. Was it when you dropped off your kid at school? Or was it when you looked outside your office window and saw the striking beauty of the Flatirons? Perhaps it was as simple as when you had your oatmeal with a little bit of added dark chocolate. Whatever your favorite moment of today is, I suspect it involved one of three things: the company of the people we love, the serenity and safety of where we are, and perhaps the delicacies we enjoy every so often. We are privileged. The parents in Gaza do not get to drop off their children. What remains of schools is the rubble. The sea, Gaza's refuge from the occupation, has become a place where they are killed. As for food, there is no food. Countless children have starved to death. Basic human rights are not met. How can we, the residents, the students, the parents of the city of Boulder, live the life we have, enjoy the company of our loved ones, eat and sleep in the comfort of our homes, while knowing that our great city, our home, our Boulder, is investing in companies supporting the demise, starvation, and continued expulsion and uprooting of those in Palestine? Let's not be responsible. Let's not have blood on our hands. Let us live our lives morally. Let our Boulder divest.
Thanks. Now we'll go to Evan Rabitz in person, Chris Allred in person, and Julie Van Damland in person.
Evan Rabitz, 47-year resident. Finally, divest from Microsoft and Caterpillar, at least. A whole year ago, mathematician Aaron Bingham, ad open comment, told you they were complicit. Both he and I have reminded you several times since. These investments violate city policy, which prohibits investing in, quote, "firearms or weapons not used in national defense." When used to kill, software and bulldozers are weapons, just like a baseball bat used to kill is legally a weapon. Microsoft and Caterpillar stocks have both doubled just during this genocide. So the city made about 8.5 million in less than two years, just on these two stocks, now worth $17,170 per Boulderite. Congratulations on all the new blood money. But I think you did it mostly to please our drill baby drill, kill-Israel-kill baby governor. It's backfiring. Now 92% of Democrats are against what Israel is doing. But you thought you could, pardon me, but you thought, lying to us repeatedly, that there's some city rule that says you can't take a position. And you have 37 PR propagandists on staff to spread the lie, triple the number in 2018. Now Bob Yates is spreading the lie on Boulder Reporting Lab. Did you, Tina, consult the city's propagandists before telling your newsletter subscriber there were only three or four of us, when there's usually 20?
Time's up. Thanks. Now we go to Chris Allred and Julie Van Damland. If we have time, we'll go back to people that we weren't here earlier.
Hi, my name is Chris Allred, and I work with Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. I'm here tonight to address the topic of Boulder's investment portfolio. It's important for the city's investments to reflect the community's values, and I commend Councilmember Adams for bringing this topic to the council's attention tonight. Please see that I distributed a recent article from July 29th in Democracy Now! titled, "Designed as Death Traps: Former Green Beret Who Worked at Gaza Food Sites Reveals Rampant War Crimes." Let's not downplay the severity of what's happening. These are not military actions, they are war crimes, violations of the Geneva Conventions. Setting up so-called aid distribution in active combat zones. Targeting of civilians, massacres, and starvation. In a time of war crimes, it is essential to oppose the systemic conditions which allow them to happen. Howard Zinn once said, "You can't be neutral on a moving train." To be silent in a time of such horrible systemic violence is choosing a side. In regard to the Agenda Item tonight, I am citing the new evidence being brought to light by the UN Human Rights Council 59th Session, which has very serious implications for US involvement and corporate involvement in war crimes. All levels of the US government have a duty to speak out against this injustice. The conditions of corporate crime and human rights violations will only worsen if local governments don't speak out to hold the federal government accountable. A healthy democracy has representation at every level of government. Therefore, I urge you to divest from the companies Caterpillar and Microsoft due to the evidence presented in the recent UN Human Rights Council report. Please summon all of your courage to face this important issue and vote yes to divest. Thank you.
Thanks. Julie Van Damland, and then Leslie Glustrom, and I think Richard Cate are here as well.
Good evening. My name is Julie Van Damland. This is the last time I'm going to appear in front of you as the Executive Director of EFA, as I retire next week. And Debbie Pope will be taking over, who has been the Director of the YWCA. I wanted to make sure I stopped by to say thank you. It's been an incredible 11 years for me, and the partnership between EFA and the city of Boulder has been a core part of that. From the beginning of launching the Keep Families Housed program with you, which is one of the most successful prevention of family homeless programs around, to getting through COVID and everything else that we've gone through. So I wanted to just really highlight the importance, both of your support as a council and the great professional work we do with your staff, Elizabeth and the whole crew. I see you there. You know, this partnership with EFA is all the more important because of the results that Joaquin just shared with you from the survey. One of the things that caught my eye was that the expenses that respondents had gone up the most were rent, food, and medical expenses. Those are the three areas that are going to be shrunk most dramatically in the federal safety net. We were already seeing less food in our food bank at EFA. Community food share, which provides half of our food, has seen budget cuts. So my parting words are about the dark skies ahead. We've always shared with you, we've been the canary in the coalmine, and we know that EFA and the city will keep working together. But since I won't be asking for money at the September budget hearing, like I always do, I just want you to please keep the strain on the safety net in mind. It's going to be tremendous. EFA is out trying to get as much private money as possible, but the city will have to contemplate how much you're going to support the poorest in our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Leslie Glustrom and finish with Richard Cate.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm sorry I missed the new start time. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Leslie Glustrom. I do a lot of work on climate change, and I have three thoughts for you tonight. Always, I just want to begin with a thank you for your service to the community. It's definitely not easy, and I sincerely appreciate it. I appreciate that, for the most part, it's done in a civil fashion. I share the deep concerns about Gaza, and I would love to see my city find a way to balance this incredibly difficult situation. You're all pretty smart, I think you can do that. My second comment is really about the handout you've just gotten. As you know, I've spent over 20 years at the Public Utilities Commission, working in large part to try to reduce the carbon emissions associated with our electricity. And as part of doing that, I've watched our rates go up and up, and I've watched XL's profits go up and up. When we could still show PowerPoints, you saw this PowerPoint many times, sales are flat over the last 20 years, the red line, their profits have soared. Every year, I kind of track this through XL's financial reports, and I decided to just give you a copy of the actual data. The first page is the 2024 10K. I've highlighted the $782 million in after-tax net income for XL in Colorado. This is just the Colorado branch. We're about 3% of their load, so that means that over 20 million is leaving our community every year. So we've been penny-wise and pound-foolish. The municipalization was about $2 to $3 million a year, about 10 times that amount, leaving our community every year in the Monopoly's profits. I'm always shocked, I always think I'm not going to be shocked. If you turn to the next page, it's the second quarter report, and you can see that the rates have gone up over 22%. Finally, Denver City Council is taking action. I encourage you to join them.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to finish up with Richard Cate online.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I'm here to talk about one of the fastest, lowest-cost ways Boulder can add housing right now, and why our current rules are stopping it. We have office buildings sitting vacant. Many of these spaces are already built out with kitchens, bathrooms, and sprinklers. With a simple change of use, they could become apartments in weeks, not years. But under current policy, the second we reclassify these as residential, the city applies the full inclusionary housing fees, the same as if we were breaking ground on brand-new development. That extra cost doesn't just slow projects down, it kills them. A small conversion that could add four, 12, even 15 homes just can't absorb a six-figure fee. Instead, these newer units never come online, and Boulder loses both housing and supply and a chance to reuse underutilized commercial space. I'm asking council to consider a change, exempt or reduce affordable housing fees for adaptive reuse projects where no new square footage is built. Give us a path to deliver homes faster, cheaper, with far less environmental impact. These conversions align with Boulder's values. They add housing, reduce vacancies, and strengthen neighborhoods, all without sprawl or massive new construction. Let's take a page from other progressive cities around the nation. Let's stop treating adaptive reuse like new construction. If we clear this one hurdle, Boulder can unlock dozens of ready-to-go homes in months, not decades. This is the low-hanging fruit for our housing crisis. Let's not leave it on the tree. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of open comment. I'll turn to city staff to see if there are any responses.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll say, I know that there are some topics that we're going to be talking about later today, so I won't address that. There was a comment by someone about 15-minute neighborhoods, and I'll note that staff is going to follow up. 15-minute neighborhoods are actually already in our Boulder Valley Comp Plan, but staff is going to follow up on community assemblies, how they came to be, and answer those questions. So know that they will be reaching out. And I also just want to take a moment to thank Julie for her service. It has been an extraordinary partnership, all your years here, just an amazing thing. I know council will probably do the same, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for all you've done. And we will, of course, remember you at budget time, because I've got you in the back of my head, so just thank you.
Teresa? Shh, quiet in the audience, please. Teresa, shh, quiet, quiet in the audience, please. Quiet in the audience. Quiet in the audience. This is your last warning. All right, we're going to have to call a recess. And I think now comes the time where council members can respond with up to 30 seconds to open comment. I'm going to start by calling, oh, questions for staff. Yeah, good point. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I was, as someone referred to 37 propagandists, and I was wondering if you could provide, I believe that's our communications team that they were talking about, and maybe you could provide us a little more information about that.
I'm happy to, and I, I'm sorry that they are spoken to about in that way. Our communications and engagement people do tremendous things for our community, I will say. We have 34 positions, 33 full-time positions and two part-time positions in our communications and engagement department, divided into three main areas. Eighteen deal with general communications, responsible for your most general portfolio. There are 8.5 FTE that do engagement functions. You see those in communities and in neighborhood work. And then 5.5 that do creative services, many of the people that you see here doing the boards and commissions work, the folks that keep these live streams going. I can go ad nauseam about the important and really great work that they do in engaging our community. I will spare you from that, but they are extraordinary professionals that do a lot to do, engage community, to share out and disseminate information, and I stand behind the staff that we have.
Thank you. Thank you. I also had one other about the affordable housing fee being applied to the conversion of commercial buildings. I suppose that makes sense, but I hadn't thought about that before. Could you clarify that that, if that is indeed what we do? Or we could get that as a follow-up answer.
Yeah. I see Kurt standing up and perhaps telling me that we can get back to you on that. I don't know if Kurt is coming down, but we can get back to you. We will get back to you on that.
Great. I saw Tina and then Taysha with questions.
Yeah, I had the same question about the conversion and have, and interested in learning more about that and opportunities. And then the second is, where are we on the anti-Islamophobia proclamation? We looked at that in February, I think, and we're hoping to get back to it.
I will say that that is, thank you. I will say that that declarations are the prominence of council. Certainly, we had thought to work on that. We will continue to see if we can move that forward as that works. I know that other council members were working on that and will love to bring that forward as we can.
Can I call Akwiyana, please?
Yes, and then you can roll into your question.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. That's all your questions. Thank you. So, yes, I am happy to work and always will with any council member that is interested in working with us on continuing that. There were some stumbling blocks on agreement, on terminology, on, and I welcome, you know, multiple conversations about it instead of just one. So happy to talk about that at any time. My question was about the XL energy conversation, and I just wanted to get a reminder on and have our community be reminded of the next conversation we're having about XL energy. Thank you.
I'm actually not recalling when that's coming up. I know we have it during the year, but we will, I'll get back to you and happy to write a hotline so that those that follow hotline will have it out publicly, but I know that it will be some point during the year.
Okay. Not seeing any other, Ryan, question?
Well, on the, sorry, not a question.
Okay. So then I'll roll into our, we do our allotted 30 seconds if we would like to speak to open comment. I'm going to start by calling on myself because I want to thank Julie Van Dalman for her years of incredible service as the head of EFA. So just so grateful to the partnership to keeping families housed and everything you've done to keep people clothed, housed, and fed in our community. So just deep gratitude. Thank you so much. Good.
I mean, you're just going to hear us gush about Julie, so, you know, you just come on up here, I guess. No, I'm just, I mean, everything that the mayor said, and I'll just say exemplary public servant. There's really been few that meet the standard that Julie has provided in our community and just gracious for all the work you've done and really look forward to seeing what you're doing in your next chapter. Hopefully, that involves some cool rest and some fun activities because you have really done an amazing job serving our community, and so I hope to see you in the next chapter.
Yes, Julie, thank you so much. An amazing job, and we very much appreciate what you've done for the city of Boulder. I had one other comment. I am very supportive of the gentleman who was promoting the concept of adaptive reuse of buildings, but I do want to throw out one cautionary note. It's not as easy as one would think. You have to work with an existing envelope. You have to gut it. You have to make sure you've got kitchens in all the right places. That was what I always did as a developer, but it's not easy.
Time's up, I think. Thanks, Ryan.
So first point of order, I thought this 30 seconds was to respond to problematic commentary, or is this just 30 seconds for whatever?
For anything related to open comment.
Fine, okay. I just wanted to then come to the defense also of our staff members who were called a dirty word, and if you didn't have 30, some at least communications professionals operating a city of this size doing the kinds of things we are trying to do, I guarantee you would be asking for more of it, or at least the things that would lead to that. It's some of the most fundamental work that this study does, is communicate with, engage with, and let people understand how to get involved and what we're doing. So I just want to say thank you to our communications and engagement staff, and you are well-loved.
Well said. Thank you. Tara, and then Taysha.
Julie, thanks for everything. Every time I came to visit, you taught me everything that I would ever need to know about EFA and everything that we can do to help people, and you're going to be missed. Also, thanks to Richard Kate, like everybody else already said, about talking about adapt, that was a tongue twister, adaptive reuse, as well as trying to solve some of our housing problems in a more creative way.
Taysha?
First, I just want to thank all of our community members, sometimes mislabeled as protesters, for coming and asking us to use the authorities that we have. I will have more on that later. I also wanted to thank Leslie Grisham, who also comes to this meeting for the last year and a half, reminding us of our responsibilities around energy, and I look forward to continuing to have a high level of corporate accountability everywhere we spend our money. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you to Julie. Thank you.
That's everybody. Then that brings us to the end of open comment. We would take a break if it weren't already 6:30. So since it is 6:31, let's roll right into the rest of the meeting and go to the consent agenda, please. Eliseo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The consent agenda is item number three on tonight's agenda, and it includes items 3A through F, H, and I.
Thank you. And I might start off, Nurya, I wonder if you might just speak to why we postponed item 3G.
I will be limited in what I say. We have reached a tentative agreement with our Boulder Police Officers Union. We are waiting for that agreement to now be ratified by the membership, and while I am hopeful, I do not want to get ahead of myself, and so I will leave it there, but we will have to come back to council.
Thanks for that. Right. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Tara?
Son, I have a question on, I just come, you know what? Go with somebody else first. Let me just find the number.
Mark?
Yeah, I have a number of questions with respect to 90 Arapaho. I don't know if we want to do it here, if we want to pull it off consent and do it in a different form. I'm happy to talk to Brad if he's available, maybe we can clear many of them up in advance.
Do we have Brad in the audience right up front there?
Of course we do. Okay, thanks, Brad. The, what's the current condition of the property that is currently scheduled to be landmarked? I'm told that it was, that it's in desperate condition.
Thank you, Councilman Wallach. Brad Mueller with Planning and Development Services. I'm going to let Marcy Gerwig, our historic preservation specialist, speak to that. I will say there's multiple interpretations of condition, but we can give you the history of its historic designation and its current condition in that context.
Good evening, councilmembers. Marcy Gerwig, Principal Planner and PNDS. The property at 90 Arapaho, a portion of that property was landmarked already in 2021, so it is already designated. The condition of the building is that that project is in construction. So the exterior materials have been removed. That's within the approved landmark alteration certificate approved by the Landmarks Board, and foundation repair has occurred, and additions have been constructed on the rear of those buildings. So it is in construction and already designated.
I assume this is a wood exterior?
Yes, both now and historically.
And the property is in the WUII, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Do we have any conflict between our desire to make Boulder a little more fire resilient and our desire to preserve landmark properties? I mean, it looks a little bit strange to me that we have two impulses here.
Yeah, thank you. I would say this particular instance was already well in process before the WUII was adopted or the current version of the WUII. I think, as we've talked about in study sessions, it certainly is an open question about timing relative to historic preservation properties and those types of things.
Okay.
If it's, if that's all right. I spoke at a wildfire preparedness event in Mapleton Hill yesterday about this topic specifically where it is a question of how can historic buildings also meet the wildfire regulations? And the reality is that there's actually quite a bit of alignment in what you can do, and so there are construction methodologies to, or wall constructions that would meet the fire rating with wood siding, but there are other ways to achieve that as well.
Now I want to move to the money. How do we negotiate the degree of relief to be offered to a developer who's saying he's impoverished and the project is not economically feasible? I mean, how do we get to the amount of relief to be offered? Is that a number that the developer suggests, or is there an analytical process that we engage in to determine that number? And for instance, the request today is for a reduction to 24% affordable housing. How do we get to that number as the appropriate degree of relief versus 28% or 30%?
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that question, too. I will defer to my colleague Kurt Fernhoffer on the specifics, but I will say that the criteria for considering an amendment to the development review, agree, or the development agreement, is somewhat agnostic to specific costs. It's more in reaction to whether it can be supported under any amended, proposed amendments, but I'll again let Kurt elaborate.
Thank you, Mark. Kurt Fernhoffer, Housing and Human Services. So our department does not go into the pro forma and analyze it with a developer in this type of negotiation. What we do, however, look at is, for example, a study which was done a couple of years ago that was used to update our inclusionary housing ordinance. It was an outside consultant who has expertise in this that looked at different types of developments and the level of affordability that they could actually create on a site. So they looked at generic, five different generic-type developments. We use that as sort of background in understanding this particular annexation as well as other annexations. The other, the last thing I'll add is that we look at the full community benefit. There's other community benefits like the landmarking we've just spoken about, and there's costs related to that. There's landmarking of historic walls, there's site constraints, there's open space that was dedicated. So looking at really the whole package and at the affordable housing in isolation.
One last question. As the applicant suggests, we've not really seen the full impact of tariffs on building costs yet. What happens if in a year, the applicant comes back again for additional relief? Is this a one-off, or could we be having this conversation again next August?
We did have that conversation with the developer, and at the time of those negotiations, things were changing, and it was hard to understand, I think, what those impacts would be. But I do believe that the developer took some of that into consideration, and we also talked about the fact that we don't want to come back again on this. Further questions on that, I think we'd have to go to the developer, though.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm just going to call on myself here because I wanted to get one thing on the record. So can you confirm that if we pass the annexation agreement that is the amendment that is on the consent agenda, those buildings will still be landmarked, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Yep, Ryan.
I also have a question or two, Brad. My understanding is the property has the status of both being affordable housing and landmark designation, and that both of those conditions are something the city prompted as part of the annexation agreement. Is that right?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. And then, secondly, the combination of being affordable housing and landmark designation, my understanding is that is very unusual. Is that, is that true? Do you know?
Boy, I appreciate the question, Councilmember Shuhart. I'm not sure I can answer that. I think each annexation is unique, and I think one of the things we recognize more and more is that it's important to think of all aspects of the proposal in the context of a variety of city policies. But certainly, affordable housing is often one of those in cases where historic conditions exist that inevitably is going to come up as well.
Okay, thank you. I think I was just getting at, if it is the case that the city had prompted both of those statuses to occur, affordable housing and landmarking, and if that is very unusual, and then also if landmarking would make affordable housing more expensive, and the city is the entity that prompted this in the first place, I'm just trying to understand, maybe we ought to be looking at this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think what that speaks to is the concept that there's maybe an inherent conflict between affordability and landmarking and the maintenance of it. I don't know that as staff we agree with that premise. There are many, many different conditions, and if Marcy would like to elaborate, I think she can speak to the instances where that actually can be advantageous towards affordability. So maybe I'll defer, Marcy, if you feel you've got something to add.
Sure, I'm happy to answer specific questions as well, but to your earlier question, there are very few landmarks that are also affordable units. To my knowledge, I think there are three. The biggest one coming up with the Geological Society of America building, but there is one just east of this property on Arapaho that entered into the inclusionary housing program in 2016, and there were two to three times the number of applicants for that unit compared to the average number at that time. But to the point about the cost of maintaining these buildings when they come in through site review or annexation is part of a bigger redevelopment project, the buildings are thoroughly renovated before they enter into the inclusionary housing program. So the first owners are starting out with like-new construction, and then the inclusionary housing program recognizes that older buildings, older than 20 years, may take more to maintain, so the cap is increased to the amount that owners can invest in those. And then for owners of designated properties, they're eligible for state tax credits to help offset the cost of rehabilitation, and that's capped at $100,000 in general, but with the inclusionary housing cap, it would be a $10,000 tax credit that resets every 10 years or upon the sale of the property. or upon the sale of the property.
Okay, thank you both. That's all.
Tara, are you ready to be coming back to?
Sure. Are we done with that subject?
Not necessarily, but any, but you can ask your own question.
No, this was about another.
Okay, well, then if anybody else has questions on 90 Arapahoe, why don't we do those?
So a question in terms of process going forward. If they were to approve this annexation, do they need to come back for a site review? Given that the previous one approved a different site plan, basically, and items? Or does this annexation basically cover that?
I'm going to have to defer to Chandler, who is also on the line and is the staff planner for this particular case. I believe we're past site plan, but I don't want to misspeak here, so deferring to.
Yes, hi. Hi, this is Chandler Van Skok, Principal Planner. There will be some level of amendment required to the site review. We're not sure exactly, but really they're just kind of moving affordable units into what were market rate units and vice versa. So it's kind of an internal reconfiguration of the site. So they would have to amend some of the site review documents, but it would likely, it might be possible administratively. Or at the very most, it would likely be kind of a call-up to planning board type situation. So not a major site review amendment.
Okay, well, I appreciate the assessment on not major. I'm just curious if there was more discretionary process in front of us after this. So it sounds like there may be, depending on.
Yes.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about whether, because we're using the analysis on affordability to come up with a new number of affordable units, whether that helps us not have other developers who are looking for some financial relief to come back to us for their projects when they find that their conditions change for whatever reason. We don't have a specific reason why this is changing. Whether we would anticipate having more requests such as this, whether it's an annexation or not?
Here again, I'm going to defer to my colleague for the most of the answer. But I will say that we are fond of saying in the land use review process that every site is unique and site-specific. So whether it sets precedent or not is kind of a matter of context. We recognize that each site needs to be considered on its own merits. Kurt, feels like I answered, but let's see.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have much to add. We do know that there have been annexations that have been approved over the last few years that have not been built. And what we've been told by the developers, they can't seem to make it work. So I think it is possible. We have seen annexations that they thought they were going to get out of the ground and it's been a few years. And the market also changes. So an annexation that was approved, you know, six, seven years ago, you know, it may look different today. But I think it's like with any planning process, there is, there is, there's always room to come back and amend a site plan and annexation process.
Can I ask a follow-up question of Kurt? Do you feel comfortable with the new affordability percentage? Were that to be used in general?
The 25%? I think it is, it's right at the top of, well, I will say that there's some, some projects that will, that cannot happen because of the high percentage. It takes a particular type of project for it to occur. In my nine and a half years, there's only been one project that's done onsite affordable of 25%. And they've really, they really struggled to make that happen. So I think the market sort of answers that question a little bit as well.
Any other questions on this topic? Seeing none, then go to your next one, Tara.
Okay, this is in regards to E, which is 5691 South Boulder Road. So we got, I don't know who wants to speak to this, Brad or Chandler, but we got quite a few letters with the neighborhood being concerned about the increase in the height to 32 feet. And I'm wondering if somebody can speak to that.
Absolutely. Brad Mueller, Planning and Development Services, again. We've got several staff who can speak to that. So I'll let them self-identify which one wants to go first.
Yeah, Brad, I'm happy to address that, if that's all right. This is Chandler Van Skok again. And so, you know, the background of this, right, is the way that the city measures height is from the low point of natural grade within 25 feet of the tallest side of the structure. And natural grade is defined as the grade that was existing at the time that the charter was adopted in 1971. So it's essentially historic grade, whatever the grade was in 1971. And when applicants come in, they're required to provide documentation of what that grade was at that time. And then we use that to measure the height of buildings. So when, in this instance, the developer, as you guys know, came in, had an annexation, had a site review approved. As part of the site review, they had a preliminary grading plan. And we don't require full engineering documents at the time of site review. We require them to provide some, but then we have the technical document review process to really get into the details of the engineering and the grading and civil, et cetera. So when they came in, they, they thought that they were going, they knew they were going to have to add some grade because this site does sit in a depression. It's, you know, between five and seven feet lower than the adjacent street, 55th Street to the west and the adjacent neighborhood to the south. So they knew they were going to have to add some fill in order to make drainage work. And they originally proposed about three feet during site review. Then when they came back in for the technical document review and went through our engineering review, they realized that they actually had to add another two to three feet of grade. And this is to fit utilities and also to provide adequate drainage so that all the water flowed into the detention areas off the site to the north. So essentially, their, where we measure height from got pushed up about six feet and they were anticipating about three feet. And they thought that they could make it work. As, as you may recall, this developer kind of relies on like pre-designed homes in order to be able to construct them, you know, quickly and predictably and make them affordable. So they thought that they could fit the pre-designed homes when they had three feet of increased height. But then when they realized that they actually had about six feet of increased height and that the low point where we measure height from was getting pushed down further, they realized that they couldn't really modify the homes to fit the height standards and still make them livable in the way that they wanted to. And they would essentially have to customize and do all sorts of stuff and reduce the amount of livable space. So the, you know, I understand the neighbors' concerns. We have reviewed this and engineering has reviewed this. They're not asking to add more fill through this process. The fill, the amount of fill that is going on the site has already been approved through the technical document process. They're essentially just asking for leniency or for additional height just based on the way we measure it. But the homes themselves will be the same size. All of the drainage and stormwater meets all of our design and construction standards. So we do not anticipate any off-site impacts to the neighboring properties. And all the water will match historic stormwater levels. So, did that answer your question?
Yep. Tara's nodding. Thanks, that was very thorough, Chandler. Okay, and any other questions and any other matters? Matt and then Tina.
I'm going back to the other one. And this might be a legal question, but I'm not sure. So are we, in making this annexation affordability change, this change in affordability, are we, are we setting a number that we should be taking more time to think through? Or is there enough individuality with the site because of the open space, because it was an annexation, that this wouldn't be considered a precedent that's specific? The precedent of reducing the number of units might exist, but not, it doesn't have to be 24% because we have a different set of criteria that we chose to do the annexation?
I'm not sure that's entirely a legal question. What I can say is annexation agreements are individualized. They're, they're contract by contract. And so one annexation agreement does not necessarily inform or influence any other annexation agreement.
Do you mind if I colloquiate in on that? Just because I've been dealing with these for 15 years and every annexation agreement that comes forward does have its own unique characteristics. So I generally don't see a saying, well, we're doing it exactly the same way we do all the other ones. So they ebb and flow over time.
So my question's around 3F, so probably a question for Nuria. It's regarding the Verizon on South Boulder Rec Center. And I'm just wondering, after the N-Car fire, we, there were some conversations about some inadequate service and some holes and some dead zones and stuff. And so I'm just wondering that if there is going to be a new lease agreement, have there been conversations about boosting that reliability? Especially given our WIA and our other emergency broadcasting systems, there were certainly some known and well-documented instances of people not getting those messages because of poor service, a mere quarter mile away, especially a school did not have adequate cell service that was needed for emergency sort of communication. So I'm just wondering if those conversations were discussed in the leasing agreement with Verizon to use South Boulder Rec Center to sort of boost coverage so we have better reliability for community safety?
I don't believe that the current contract discussed that particularly, but we can certainly take that back to Verizon and make sure that that conversation gets covered.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any further hands raised. So I wonder if someone might contemplate a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Alicia, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll start tonight's roll call for the consent agenda items 3A through F, H, and I with Councilmember Wallach.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Yes.
Councilmember Markless.
Yes.
And Shuhar.
Yes.
The consent agenda items are hereby approved unanimously.
Thanks very much. And can we go to our call-up check-in, please?
Yes, sir. Call-up check-ins are item 4A on tonight's agenda. And we have the site review amendment, including a height modification request to amend the approved design guidelines and allow for six, six market rate units to be up to 40 feet in height within the approved Peacock Place development at 5691 South Boulder Road. This is referenced under LUR 2025 00022.
Any questions, comments, or desire to call this item up? Question?
So I don't know if this is for Chandler or Brad. I have the same question that I had. Does the same thing that applied for the, for the consent agenda, just do you hear my accent, the New York accent, apply to this 40 feet in height increase?
Hi, oh, yes, yes. It's exactly the same thing. They're two different processes just because of the way the code works. Essentially, they had to ask for an annexation agreement amendment for the ADU height and a site review amendment for the principal dwelling unit height. But it is the same exact reasoning behind it.
Is that it? Okay, anything else on this item? Seeing none, then that's no desire to call this one up. So can we go to our item 8A, please?
Yes, sir. Next on tonight's agenda is our item number 11A, and that is the executive session.
No, I think we got 8A, the matters from mayor and members of council.
Thank you. I totally missed that on my notes. My apologies, everyone. Next on tonight's agenda, as I was corrected, is item 8A, matters from the mayor and members of council. 8A is the City of Boulder's investment portfolio discussion.
Thanks for that, Ayesha. So we do have this set for 15 minutes of discussion. And Ayesha and Emily, I wonder if we might just put a timer up just so we can be mindful of the time, if that's doable, and just encourage folks to keep remarks limited so we can get through it in that amount of time because it is prescribed by our rules of procedures. And then Teresa, I'd reach out to you to get us started in terms of what exactly we're discussing here or considering.
Yes, happy to help, mayor. So this is a consideration of whether there has been a material change in law or fact. A material change in law or fact means a change that if having occurred prior or before the prior council decision would have made it unlikely that a majority of council would have supported the prior decision. So if five or more council members support reconsideration of prior, of the prior decision, then only at that time would you schedule a substantial discussion of the item. So there's a threshold question tonight, which is, is this a material change of law or fact such that five council members would reconsider their prior decision?
Thanks for that clarification. Well, Taisha, you brought this forward, so if you would like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Today, I ask my fellow council members to walk our talk on sustainability, equity, and resilience by holding ourselves accountable to our city's values and goals by removing Caterpillar and Microsoft from our investment portfolio. If this decision results in more, oh, sorry, it was the beginning. I sit here before you today as an African-American elected. And if it were not for the local and global divestment efforts from the free goods movement in the United States starting in 1838 and the United Kingdom, which started in 1840s and 1850s during enslavement, as well as the Mississippi bus boycotts, which brought the state of Mississippi to its economic needs resulting in integration and pathways towards equal justice. This request is also policy-driven. Now that this request to align our investment portfolio with our human rights and climate goals and values is not the responsibility of the federal government, it is our responsibility as the sole authority of our city council's investment portfolio. Please do not let anyone gaslight you into thinking our city has no power here. We must not lose sight of the power of our local cities and states when it comes to saying no to genocide in Gaza, in Sudan, in Congo, and anywhere that poisonous root rattles. In 2017, the City of Boulder established the Sustainability, Equity, and Resilience Framework and the council and community identified focus areas that included responsibly governed and environmentally sustainable. In 2022, the City of Boulder aligned our budget approach towards outcomes-based budgeting with the SER framework, hoping to understand the impacts of our funding choices and the allocation of our city's resources in support of our goal. This data is visible and embedded within the 2025 budget dashboard online, which includes outcomes for our city's investment portfolio. Sadly, those outcomes do not address issues of equity or sustainability, only fiscal returns. So what evidence has been provided in the United Nations report about Caterpillar and Microsoft? We know that based on the UN report, Caterpillar has demolished Palestinian homes, infrastructure, and lives. We know that based on the UN report, Microsoft technologies are embedded in prisons, policing, universities, and schools, including in colonies. And I have witnessed firsthand during my recent visit to the West Bank, sitting next to the partition wall in Bethlehem while children played next to the wall with an AI-powered machine gun pointed at them. According to the UN, in July 2024, an Israeli cardinal described cloud tech as, quote, "a weapon in every sense of the word," and citing these companies.
And just, it's been three minutes, so.
Yes, thank you. And then I would just like to conclude with, are these violations specific to Gaza? And sadly, the answer is no. Microsoft is in Congo, where there are continued allegations against child mining used for cobalt. Caterpillar has been in Sudan since 1952, providing machines that have been found in illegal mining facilities. And so today, I ask my fellow council members to walk our talk, as I mentioned, by not investing in these companies and more importantly, being brave enough to align our values with our investments, just like other cities. We are indeed the ones we have been waiting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to this matter? Ryan, you got something?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Adams, for bringing this forward and appreciate your perseverance on the issue. The devastation and suffering is unimaginable. And our community. The devastation and suffering is unimaginable, and our community is having a collective traumatic experience. Palestinians, Jews, Muslims, people with family and loved ones in the region, residents who can't look at their television or feed without seeing it, neighbors who feel a shared humanity, people whose identities are a target of hate and abuse and who are being treated even worse now, people of all different, with all different hopes and dreams, who are caught in the horror of this conflict against their will. I am saddened and I'm grieving, especially for the Palestinians and the Jews who've lost their lives and had their lives shattered. And I know a lot of people are asking the city to intervene, because they feel the federal government has turned its back and is working against people who are oppressed and living at the margins. And they are left with a deep ache of injustice. This weighs heavy on me. The situation in Gaza is untenable and unacceptable, and it needs to be resolved. It's gone on for too long. It needs to de-escalate, it needs to end. And I am wishing for a speedy resolution that parties can accept, and I hope our congressional representatives and other federal officials will do everything to support that outcome. Still, I continue to think that investing the city's resources in this conflict is not wise. For one, the opinions in our community are very divided. Number two, we don't have the expertise or capacity to facilitate a resolution in this conflict, and we risk bringing additional harm to community members and relationships if our best attempts go awry. And then third, the resources needed to take this on in a well-considered way are substantial, and they will divert resources from our efforts to increase affordability, create better services and access to them, and to deal with the degraded economy, degraded funding, and the chaos coming at us from the federal government that we are running to keep up with. So unfortunately, I think weighing in on investments in this conflict follows from that, and so I'm not in favor moving forward. And I also am reticent to be selecting and deselecting individual stocks in response to a specific problem from the DIAS. I think it warrants a fuller process. What I do see in the UN report is a long list of companies that are bound up in this conflict. And my takeaway is that where there is violence and injustice, the capitalist economy and the technologies we use every day tend to be right there with it. So I would endorse that we consider updating our investments framework broadly, doing so in a way that is comprehensive, global, clear about what we want to invest in, and what it means for the city's connections to the economy more broadly, including our procurement of products and services, our partnerships, and how we think about it. And I would like that to happen above and beyond the specifics of the Gaza conflict. I think the right way to do it is to build on the existing sustainable and responsible investing approach we have, which screens out companies and industries and categories that are problematic, which we last updated in 2017. That's something I would like to see consideration of at the new work plan setting session when this council comes back in 2026. So just to close, I welcome those to disagree with me on the particulars broadly. You might be right, I might be wrong, and I'm listening, and I can hopefully learn from you and be better. But as we go forward, I invite all who would consider it, that this is a terrible crisis that is taking a terrible toll on our community in so many different ways, and I hope for us to be able to treat each other as humans and to be able to hold space for all the difficult things one another are going through.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Ryan. Any other notes? I'll just note, we have seven minutes left. So does anybody else have anything they need to add before we check the will of council? Tina?
Yeah, I just wanted to appreciate both Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Shuhar for your comments. And especially, it's, it's just a really hard time, and I think we're, it's incredibly sad and feels hopeless, but ultimately, I agree with Ryan's analysis, but it's really tough.
Yeah. Lauren?
As Ryan mentioned, our investment portfolio hasn't been revisited since 2017. This item that Taisha has brought up was something that I originally voted for, and I would still like to see us revisit our investment procedure in a detailed and comprehensive Our rules ask if I believe the new information presented would have changed the outcome of our council's vote, had it been available prior to that decision. And unfortunately, I do not believe that to be the case. And because of that, I cannot support revisiting that decision at this time. I see so many of our community members in pain, and I would like to see us work towards a resolution, a statement to reflect the pain that our community is feeling. I know we do not have the power to solve international issues, but we do have the privilege of being able to call out the actions that we see and find disagreement with, and I hope that that is something that we will consider.
Thanks. Anybody else? I'll just call on myself and say I really appreciate everyone's remarks about the horrendous tragedy that's going on in the Middle East, but I do follow where Ryan is as well. I thought that was all very well-stated, Ryan. Thanks for that. Seeing no other hands raised, then Teresa, would a straw poll on this be appropriate?
Yes, Mayor, because we're under matters, no vote is permitted. However, you do need to find some way for people to indicate whether this would result in, amount, rather, to a material change of law or fact.
Okay. So I would ask for a show of hands of people who do feel like there has been a material change of law or fact that would lead us to reconsider this decision. I see that got one, and people who do not think that that is the case, please raise your hands. And that's seven. So that will not be taken up. But again, thank you for the passion with which you address this issue.
Is this a lawful matter? Thank you, Taisha!
Okay. And quiet, please, everybody. Need quiet in the room? We still have another agenda. Almo. Okay, last warning? All right, we're gonna go into recess. We just have one very brief last thing to do. If we can have 11A, please. Alicia?
I'm gonna give my apologies for missing 8A. 11A on tonight's agenda is our executive session. We have a consideration of a motion to call an executive session of the city council as authorized by 24-6-4024 of the CRS, related to the Sundance Film Festival confidential legal advice and strategy, I'm sorry, legal advice and determining positions related to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators.
Thanks, Alicia. All right, I've got a script to read here. The city manager and the city attorney have requested an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 246424B and E for a conference between city council and the attorneys for the city for the purpose of receiving legal advice and determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators related to the Sundance Film Festival. This topic announcement provides as much detail as possible without compromising the purpose for which the executive session is authorized. I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 246424B and E for a conference with the attorneys for the city for the purpose of receiving legal advice and determining positions relative to matters that may be the subject, may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators related to the Sundance Film Festival. So moved? We got a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please, Alicia?
Yes, sir. We'll start the roll call for the executive session with Councilmember Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Yes.
Councilmember Markwiss.
Yes.
Shuhar.
Yes.
And Wallach.
Yes.
Item 11A regarding the executive session is hereby approved unanimously.
Okay. And I'll note that that needed to be passed by two-thirds, and it was, with a vote of eight to zero. So the motion has passed, the council will now recess, and reconvene immediately an executive session to discuss the matter previously stated for the purposes previously stated. The time is now 8:07 PM, and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Taisha Adams, Aaron Brockett, Matt Benjamin, Lauren Folkerts, Tina Markwiss, Ryan Shuhar, Nicole, not Nicole Spear, Mark Wallach, Tara Weiner, Naria Rivera Vandermeide, Chris Messchuck, Mark Wolf, and Teresa Taylor Tate. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, I continue the regular meeting agenda, which has one item left, which is item number 12, adjournment. So we are hereby adjourned at 8:08 PM. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.